To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome all of you to the May 28 Rochester Common Council meeting. For our business, we have minutes for our last meeting. I assume everyone's had a chance to look at. Any motion to approve those?
Can I make a question?
Amy, you've made a motion, Ruth second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, communications.
Yeah, just really quickly, the state board of the council sends an email to my upcoming audit, but they didn't tell us when. So, one of the things that they look at a lot is certifications of internal control training. And there are several, everybody on the council list of her, Amy, because she hasn't signed one and doesn't have to do it again. But you have to watch a video and read a policy and then certify that you did it and then I have to attest it, you saw it. So, I've got a list of people that have been hired since the last time it was done. And anyone that has fiscal responsibility or handles money has to do it. So, I'll be taking care of all that. And then, at the end, behind your presentations is a budgeting for council members. There was a training, a training workshop that, so it's geared for your level of detail that you're into. And so, I thought it'd be useful for you since I'm pretty much kind of tacking the budget from a different direction than in prior years. So, that's why you have that.
Before we go into whole business, first of all, thank you all for coming. I know why most of you are here. Hopefully, the letter that we sent out, I sent out to you, had some explanation. And Mitch, our engineer that's been on this project for quite some time, will answer some questions here shortly. But I know we have other discussions going on tonight. Just asking you, can you concise to the point? We want to obviously work with the public in the best possible way, but also do what's betterment of the whole community. But before we go further, I promised Rick Grandstall I'd give him a chance to speak. Since this meeting is going to be lengthy, he normally would be toward the end of the program. So, Rick, I know you have something to announce.
Yes, good news. We've got a contract signed with Parkview. So, we did get a contract signed. There will be three ambulances eventually. Probably first of July, for a time for 45 days. They think they've got a line on three brand-new ambulances to bring in. So, they thought they could have them within 45 days. So, we'll keep them in our business draw. But if they get enough people to staff all the ambulances on day one, they may not on day one, but hopefully they will. So, I know I talked to Sharon about it a little bit earlier. So, I just kind of see if you guys got any other questions or any other things you need me to do. Yep, yep, big deal. It really is. It ain't started yet, but we're glad to have that. So, welcome. And they got some, you know, some ties to the county. So, it should be a good fit. They got the helicopter and their work group are going off to lunch at the project. So, we're glad to have them aboard. So, if you see any of them or whatever, introduce yourself. We will be setting up a board to carry on for the next year to make sure everything's happening the way they will. And we'll be around Rochester representing. So, that'll be up to probably the mayor or however he wants somebody on that, on that board.
Really good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, are we having extra chairs right in there? Calm down, people. Okay, whole business, Amy, do you want to update?
Yes, so it looks like everybody got the background document here. We met together as a team or a committee to talk about the Dora details and to discuss some concerns and questions that have come our way. I have been speaking more intently with Erin Schaber, who is the Planning Director at Logan's Works, understanding all of the parts and pieces related to what would need to be done to move forward. Reached out to Becca from AIM to ask some additional questions that I had needed to get clarified related to signage and indeed confirming that if we did the Dora, that the restaurants would then no longer have to fulfill the need to have the fencing if they wanted to have the outdoor seating. And so, when we went back to the table, we've got a couple of representatives here who may want to speak on behalf and just share their insight for just a couple of seconds. We decided to look at it in more of a condensed manner. I do have the map. Casey Hensley is working on getting a tinier map that would be easier to fuse because that's what we would need to upload to the State Department. But we do have this map. I will have this on if anybody's interested. Basically, it is encompassing just the area where the restaurants are for the most part. So, it's from, I think that's what Fifth Street here, where Uncorked is, going all the way past American Legion, down past where Arlington Pub House is, putting this parking lot there just in case they would want to use that for food trucks. If you pass that, it excludes this area right here where this is mostly business, that's the necessary. And then has the theater, Uncorked, and personally, Ellis and the Evergreen. So, that there, if we chose this condensed version of the Dora, it would be really for the purpose of providing them the opportunity to not have the fencing as well as if the Rochester Downtown Partnership wanted to have some sort of food truck Friday or some sort of event there on this area. We would have the ability to do that in a more convenient manner. So, I've went in, been taking signs, pictures of signs at Warsaw and Wyndale Lake, and just kind of reviewing all of their information, talking to different people there. So, trying to get the information that I need to be able to make sure that we review this effectively. I met with the district attorney Perkins this morning just to ask him his thoughts. And so, his suggestion was our next step was to get a nice condensed map, which we are working on. And we put together a formal presentation to present to you at the next city council meeting. But I think Alyssa's here, maybe somewhere. Alyssa, did you want to say anything?
Um, I can, if you would like to. So, what we see at night isn't necessarily people having a huge urge to just walk around town and drink at the same time. But especially our unique situation, having a brewery in the same building, we're constantly trying to stop people from sneaking a drink from one place to the next. And with this in place, the two, that business and my business could work together and we could allow people to bring in a drink from Uncorked to the brewery if you don't like beer or, you know, go have your Uncorked dinner while you're drinking tip of canoe beer. So, at least for us, that specific reason would really help us a lot. And we don't necessarily foresee people just walking around town drinking all the time. But being able to expand and not have to enclose two separate patios would be great for our business as well. So, we're really hoping we can get something like this working. And also during big events downtown, we can get people to come our way. You know, maybe sell them a drink while they're walking around looking at vendors booths and things like that or an outdoor concert. So, that's all. That's what we would like.
Do we have a light switch back there? We'd like to see who. Back there in the corner, so they can hit the switch and turn the lights back there.
Can you hit that switch there? Thank you. Does that bother your camera?
Perfect.
So, at the point of reference as well, Alyssa has talked to Banzinos, Ednave and Mikey's, some of the other members have talked to the other restaurants. Everybody is in favor of supporting this. You think that it will help for the needs of their business purposes. Obviously, we have a caveat that we just want to make sure that everybody's happy when we do this and that it's done in a manner that makes sense. So, I think there's enough research and opportunity. I looked at the other communities on the site that Erin's, I think, that have done this. And they are arranging, and populations are 400 to 69,000 plus. So, there are communities all over Indiana that have taken advantage of this specific legislation. Since it has been passed, I believe in 2020, to revise them in 2023. So, I think for us, just wanting to continue to speak about this, make sure that you guys provide feedback as we're moving forward, so that we can make sure that everybody has their.
And I have talked to several mayors and I got to run across one who regretted doing this. So, for this downtown exposure and events and so forth. So, something we will continue to move forward on. I mean, do you have anything you want to share?
I think Alyssa said it, like two phases, heavy on the event side, like chili cook-off and cabin area where they can walk around and without issue. And with events, you could organize the restaurants to work together and create an esteemed evening. None of us really see it as great, let's go downtown and take a walk and drink. Like it doesn't, it sounds like a line on a footloose. But it's more creating an experience and being a part of it, not just throw it out there and hope it sticks.
And we're looking at a more condensed version.
Exactly.
Because we want to give everybody the opportunity to learn and to grow. And Harry is part of this as well. He's worked with Seven, so he said he could be here, that he's in Rochester Downtown Partnership. Rick, I don't know if he's talked to you about that, but. Yeah, so I think everyone's in favor. It's just figuring out what does it look like? And what is the council comfortable with and how do we, you know, move this forward? Erin, basically, when she did the application, she had all of the designated permit teams, which means every restaurant that wants to participate, apply with the application. The map that was actually, which we hope to have a nice map like this and not this huge map, but a map like this, this is what Casey's working on. So, this area is where this is Logan's Works. Those red dots are the designated permit teams. So, everybody is aware what is and what is not in this area right here. They added a separate section where individuals outside of the Dora could come in. Maybe a brewery that was outside of the door could come in and have a special event permit, which we talked about not doing, but they added those areas where somebody could come in during the special event and have a catering license to sample maybe their beer or their wine with individuals that were attending the event. So, we will, unless you guys say.
I would have to get a special permit. Other than what say we have to do. But if you're doing the same event.
Right.
Based on the outside establishment, you would still have to get a special permit.
Correct. So, like if the dam is not included in the Dora area, but wants to come in for, for the chili cook-off, right? They would have, they would need a special permit, which isn't that hard to get. But get a special permit to be part of that. Just, and really, it's a really easy, simple advertising thing to do. Other people are in town to just, okay, if I'm part of it, then, then people can know I am. Someone.
I think it's like a one pager. It's a one pager that we had to submit an application in addition to the design of our sign that would have to be on all the door exits, as well as they say, Becca from AIM said conspicuous area. So, I was driving into Warsaw today and I saw a Dora sign right as my entrance to work. It was right on the corner of Columbia and Center Street, just right there. I guess they say that's conspicuous. You're saying the door ends here. And if you want to see the Dora, here is a QR code that is always updated. And you look and you know when you're in, when you're out. So, they make it simple with what Erin said, three weeks for approval. Maybe she put all of the effort on the front, getting the logo, the map, the sign design and et cetera. So, I don't know. No one has said anything. So, as far as, I understand you guys are still fine with me moving forward to research this with the committee. Oh, Monica's back there too. Monica, did you have anything?
Um, I would say I think that is a great idea to do the Dora thing. And it's not about having people just walking around town drinking. But like on certain events, like the chili cook-off, let's say, instead of having like one beer garden, everyone can like share that opportunity to serve drinks around town and people can walk around. But my concern, and I don't know if like Alyssa or Rickless or anyone else that would be involved in it, certain situations like the carry-in, like for my establishment, I wouldn't allow them to carry in. They can walk around, take the drink out, but I don't think that I would allow anyone to come in with a open beverage. Because that just kind of gives the risk of people going out and bringing in their own beverages without supporting the local business. So.
Those are things that we have to work out, um, understanding what that looks like. There's a special cup that you can get that has a logo on it. It has the marks on it. This is what Logan's Works do, and it says, so that every bartender knows where the mark is and what is the legal amount of beer or wine or whatever beverage. This is where they can go past that way. So, everybody is fair and the cup is, can be a fundraiser for the Rochester Downtown Partnership according to the folks in Logan's Works. They do it for a fundraiser. So, it helps to work out, but lots of information that we obtained in the committee. I just want to bless them to continue to move forward and to.
I don't think we need to go over anything. I just think just keep moving forward to get more information.
Is there anything specific that you gentlemen and ladies would like to know that you haven't shared? Any specific things that you're mostly concerned about that you'd like to have in the presentation?
Maybe, I mean, I'm thinking kind of out loud here. I know there's a lot of signs you go in, some of them fall on the business owners, but it falls on the city to mark the boundaries. So, I could, I could do something to make that interesting a little. Is a food truck, well, I want to go into the food truck board, just to just handle this. So, what I would suggest on this, and Andy correct me if I'm wrong. What I would suggest on this is for us to review this on the next, for our next Q and A and then take, figure some action on it if we want to move forward. But in the meantime, get some mapping, showing where these things are going to be located, take the record.
Yeah, I just provided that, Alyssa, to give you a brief update. There's a section rolled on the second page. It was a small change from discussion I had recently. And so, it's still, it's still a work in progress. And I didn't want you to feel like we had to go find one from last month and go on-site with old information. So, yeah, with not our intention to take it much.
Okay, so let's put this on the agenda for next, our next city council meeting. And we'll look it over, follow this, see if we get any questions here. We'll get those questions, hopefully, raised and answered before the next meeting. So, maybe we can go first or first and second reading on it if we want to. So, I like that's where we're going to go. So, maybe if we get a map and a weapon.
Well, I think I have a question for the map. So, we do have the suggested areas. We just used the committee to kind of discuss that for the downtown, where they thought they would be. But the additional question for areas outside, that's what Amy and I were talking a bit about today, is I feel like we have a great grasp on inside the city or the downtown area. But I didn't know what your expectations were related to the rest of the city. Like, you know, in the parks and such, because the park board will control that.
Counting number seven, I'm jumping around here a little bit. That food truck in the park for that movie night, Andy, is that a park board decision? To have, allow food trucks to run in and out of the park or is that?
Right now, if it's, if, yes, because it's, we're talking about inside the city park. And they can allow it. Since we don't have a global food truck ordinance, then it would be part of the jurisdiction that people have.
Okay, so we can scratch off our list for tonight. I mean, that's what I told the individual that wants to have it, is to come to park board Monday and let them make a decision.
So, Andy, would you suggest that this topic be brought up by try, or someone else to the park board regarding would it like to be parked or in the map or what would be the best suggestion?
Yeah, I think, I think having park board input in one sense or another on the food truck ordinance is going to be.
So, is the food truck and the Dora two separate things or is the food truck part of the Dora? Think it would be?
They're separate things that we need to do.
Yeah, they can benefit each other, but they are separate.
Could somebody explain to me, if I got a one-year license, what does that mean to you?
Someone?
I mean, can I, I mean, I guess my concern is, where I'm going, is can I just, if I find somebody, well, let me park it. Can I just park it in that same spot?
Well, if, as written, I think what it says, if you receive the food truck and you're not operating the food truck in any way that is contrary to the ordinance, then yes, you could. There is a line in there about private property. It is designed to simply clarify that nothing the food truck ordinance gives anyone permission to override the consent of private property on it. But simply being on private property, depending on how we write in the ordinance, simply being on private property does not inherently affect someone of a food truck. You could write an ordinance in such a way that it does, but I think it's written, we're saying the limits city limits, you have food trucks, you're going to need a permit to go to or let it on private property. And it's confirmed.
I guess I would struggle personally with the one-year and as it's written. I'd rather not. The simple way would be just not to have a one-year license as an option, I guess, unless there's.
So, are there suggestions to have shorter ones?
Well, seven-day and a thirty-day makes sense to me. I'm just, I guess, and if I'm wrong, that's, but my concern is I don't necessarily want to see a food truck sitting in the same spot all the time. Maybe some spots of it makes sense, but I don't know that I want to leave that open.
You could have a one-year license and still say, no selling food at any location for more than seventy-two hours. Regardless of the license. So, I think of the one-year license as more someone who expects to show up most of the times, not someone who has a blanket license to sell for 365 days.
Okay. If we can write that.
Andy, when we discuss this, if we ever put an event application together.
Correct, there will be an event application.
And that will be, that will open the door for a food truck to come in for that event. And that's even shorter than seventy-two hours. I thought it was like twenty-four hours.
Well, I don't want to kind of confuse two ideas. There's the event. I think you're going to end up with an event application and a food truck application.
That might, that might or might not coincide with one.
Right, one of the things that is in the, is in the food truck ordinance is drafted, is the ability for the Board of Public Works to suspend parts of the food truck ordinance. But I could, I could foresee a situation where a group comes in and wants an event where they're going to have a dozen trucks, but they're only going to be there for 12 hours, where the Board of Public Works has the authority to say, we're going to, we're going to bypass the food truck ordinance for this event because it's an event. And that, I think that we're preserving the possibility that it could still be.
And Mike with the chamber, my question to Andy was, if the chamber, who has to keep the trucks overnight? Because they have to set up the night for the Rochester Downtown Partnership. In this, it says no truck should be parked overnight. And he said that on this application, it would say, you have to, the Board of Works approve a special exception for overnight or if it's a hookup to water, here it's not here, a hookup to water or other utilities, then the Board of Works would have to actually put a special exception in the application overriding those.
Jim, is the permit going to be separate from like the water hookup and the electric hookup?
For a special, so unless I'm saying this wrong, for the event application, it would say, let's say the Rochester Downtown Partnership comes and is saying, we've got a special event from this state to this state. We need the water hookup, we need electrical hookup or do specific things, that would be separate. And it would basically, they would, the Board of Works would approve that and then we would have a special exception. This, it gets confusing because this is a food truck for all purposes and then the special event permit is separate. But it was, yeah.
So, I assume that Beth was going to keep track of the, of the that. And I'm just wondering if she's going to want to do the water, the electric and all that? Or is it going to be up to you then?
Well, I think it needs to improve on it. It's going to be an exception, so it has to go to the Board of Works.
Have to be approved on application, which then you would have to keep track of, which is a question.
In any way, but I mean, are we going to charge any, my, you know, money? Are we charging anything additional for all these special exception type things? Or is it just fifty dollars? Fifty, yeah. It seems to me that we're going to be getting all these special exceptions, that we might need to put another fee structure in there. Because it's going to be a lot, monitoring and.
Yeah, in my opinion, there's still.
And paperwork for you.
Yeah, that's administration.
It's hours. I, I don't think so. I don't think you necessarily, quite honestly.
And in my opinion, I feel like there's still some quirks that need to be worked out. I mean, I feel like we've got a good base for everything, but for Beth's purposes of her time and her, and her need of being able to make sure this is efficient for whoever does it, I think we need to think through all the hard questions.
There's surely a clean and simple answer with some work. I don't know about you, but I've gotten confused the last five minutes, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, that was funny. Andy and I were talking about it today. I mean, all of like questions kept coming up in my head where I'm like, what about this and what about that? And how would you manage this? I mean, it just, I would like it to be as clean as we always want it to be, but I think it just is.
On the application, like if we're doing an event for music festival or something like that, we collect all the applications on, one of the questions on our application is, do you require water and electricity? Can the city just, if they don't require, if it's just an artist vendor and they don't require any of that, it's a cross, if it's a food vendor that requires water and electric, like the city might want. Get the action. They'll penalize the ones that don't need it, but.
We can work out that application in such a way that you don't have to have two separate applications. That's where it gets really confusing.
And when we come to the presentation for it works, we can say, you know, hey, yes, we need electric. We know we will. We need water. Yes, we know we will. And then we'll collect those fees and then, you know, we can, we've been charged before by the previous administration for water and electric. So, I assume we get something from you guys too. I don't know why that would change. So.
Well, you got some vendors that self-prepare. You've got their own generators and that. You got to kind of just add into it.
Well, I think this presupposes, if I'm speaking correctly, Andy, that this presupposes that this would provide the opportunity for food trucks inside of an event or outside of an event. Is that correct? So, that's what this separate ordinance is. So, if there's separate ordinances for individuals who would be putting a food truck outside of some event, then one of the said individual organizations is going to be itself. Yes, I don't think it's in a rush.
All right, everybody, any other comments or questions about that? I'm going to move Monica to the top of new business. I'm going to, Monica's got foot issues. So, if you would like to go ahead and make a reservation till you go over to your foot up, we'll let you.
So, as many of you already know, I've been chairing for the American Legion's New Fireworks and I coordinated and I've done it for several years. I started doing it before COVID, even kicked in. And then during the year of COVID, we still had the fireworks and everybody was glad because everybody wanted to get out of their house, you know. The fireworks has gone up in price in the last three years. And typically, all the years before, the city has paid for half of the fireworks and the rest come from other businesses and private donations, even private citizens. So, my request is just for the city to continue with a 50% donation towards the cost of the fireworks. The cost has gone from $10,000 to $13,000. 50% donation towards the cost of the fireworks. The cost has gone from $10,000 to $13,000. So instead of being a $5,000 donation, it would be $6,500.
Well, you $6,000 last year before we gave $6,500.
Okay. And that is on the fifth?
Yes, it is. It is on Friday, the fifth, in respect and in courtesy to Akron because Akron does their big birthday, you know, besides just before the July. The town of Akron's birthday is the fourth.
I've had a lot of calls for a while there. I didn't know it was on the third or the fifth, and then I finally got confirmation. And that's what I've been telling people lately.
It is the fifth, yes.
How many motion is donated to $6,500 to the Legion and the F W? That's involved in that with fireworks.
American Legion.
Just a Legion. There we go.
A second. Have we moved the second in? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Put your foot.
We've kind of jumped over the storm already. I just wanted to talk about.
I'm going to table that for tonight. Yeah, Friday I talked about, we're going to put that forward again.
I just need a third minute. Thank you.
Okay. I was approached about wanting to look at chickens in town again. Amy's got some sample ordinance that I looked at with her that I'd like for this council to look at over the next thirty days. Also, there's a permit application, I believe, as well. I'd like for this council to look over and not make any decisions. And if anybody wants to speak about the chicken permission, permit request, that's here tonight. Okay. What about rabbits? Yes.
Because my grandson won't sleep. I guess he's shy. I moved from the country to the town in 2014. And we had poultry, we had rabbits, boots, everything out there. And I just can't see why this town won't allow poultry into town. Carmel even allows poultry into their town. You can set regulations, have a permit, make sure they have good housing. I mean, all that can be governed, I guess. I mean, you give citations for not cutting lawn, you can give citations for chickens not having a housing. It all can be governed. But he shows poultry in 4H. And there's several kids that could, that show poultry in 4H. It's just, it'll get kids out maybe. Maybe some kids in town. Maybe the parents will allow them to have four chickens. I don't think four chickens should be the one in this town. It's a rural town. But I think it would be good for the town. And eggs are better if they're from four chickens in your backyard. Right now, I take him every day out in the country to take care of his chickens. We wouldn't have to do that if it was permitted.
I'm kind of indifferent on my view of this. I do feel like very strongly one way though, as far as, I have mentioned this to the council, that even as a farmer, when I raised pigs, I had to look, I had to get permission if I wanted to expand my hog operations by adjoining neighbors even if they were a mile away. I had to get permission. I think, and I feel there's a lot of nuisance calls in my position as mayor. I think it's something that this council should consider if we do this to put in there that your adjoining neighbors should sign off on that and say, I'm okay with so-and-so having chickens next door to me. The reason that being, if we get a call from an adjoining neighbor saying, hey, they're causing trouble, well, you signed off on it. If you have not the best relationship with your neighbors, having chickens is not going to help that. So that is one thing I would consider this, or ask this council to consider as part of it if they want to consider this at all. Because I do think it's, when you live in town, you have to be conscious of your neighbors, no matter where you live in town. If you've got somebody living right next door, you have to be respectful of them. Like that is a good gesture to do. If I'm going to, if we pass an ordinance saying you can have chickens, it has to be contingent upon your neighbor signing off on it. That's my opinion. Anybody have anything they want to share about that or thoughts on that?
Stay for the, I was catching up on my city email and I was looking through and there are 12 references to people talking about chickens, believe it or not, just currently, which I thought was fascinating. And they arranged everything from mayor, city council, town council, town manager, court treasurers, court, co enforcement officers, judges. So these individuals are discussing. And that's where I found these two ordinances that I printed off because I thought if this is a discussion, these may be meant for it being logical and detailed related to making sure that it's taken into consideration effectively. So the application was the town of Etta Green. She submitted that in this thread online of discussion as how they keep track of it stating that the application seems to be helpful. Then the, so the those who have the chickens, they have qualifications for six chickens, no roosters, only hens. The one ordinance basically says it goes through every single farm animal. And so the city does not approve any of these farm animals. Don't ask about these farm animals except for hens and rabbits, I think. So there's a lot of detail there that I thought this has come up with as possible times. And if there's, I'll have to research it and see what makes sense and if it's possible to answer that.
In the last 12 years that I've been around, that this has come up, I'm sure Marty agrees, and we've always, we've always said one thing. You choose where you want to live. Do you want to live in the city? Live in the city. Or live rural? Live rural. That's hard. I mean, farms are great. And I think if your daughter raised chickens, goats and horses, you should definitely move to the country. But I know I personally, I felt this way since the first time it was brought up many years ago. I just don't see a reason for chickens in the city limit. And there was an article that I will have at the next meeting because it's about two weeks ago in Indianapolis. So then what they got, that they were talking about in Indianapolis or possibly the Carmel area now, where they were talking about childhood sicknesses from children five years and under is happening in, guess what? In neighborhoods where we have chickens. And it is related to the chickens. I can't, but I remember when I read that, I thought this was, you know, before I knew this was going to be on the council meeting tonight, that I would have, I would have it for us now, but I will have it at the next meeting. And it was just that, you know, this type of disease, this doesn't affect everyone. But, you know, neither this poison ivy or poison oak, or there's different things. But the only thing is, this could happen to youngsters going to school, passing your yard, coming around, going down the alleyway, playing and playing with the chickens and stuff. You don't know. And I just think that this could, and I know you're going to want to have free range chickens. We did this about three years ago where they were going to have free range chickens. And guess what? The neighbors all said, they're in my yard. And then the lady gets mad because the dog goes over and attacks the chicken. Well, you're going to have to. That's the way I'm standing. But I will, I would like to, I will have that article, obviously, at our next meeting. And then just something for somebody, everybody to think about, something else to throw out there.
Well, in the Indiana Board of Health, or Board of Animal Health, that was one of this town manager, Chris, that it would be important to reach out to them because they have a lot of information, which may be what you were speaking about, to understand the implications of the Indian flu and all of the other things that could potentially happen. So I think there's some things to consider related to that. There were folks that were against it, but they're in favor of it. They were always against the free range chickens. They talked a lot about the setbacks and having in the backyards, making sure that they had a sustain container that the chickens ran and giving the rules. The whole lot to be, if they consider related to that, so.
Okay. Any other discussion on chickens? We'll look at this, what Amy tapped out to us and implement this board. Rabbits, someone here, do you have a rabbit?
Yes. I'm Jennifer Branson. I, once again, grew up in the country, moved to town in 2014. And I raise rabbits. My name is on one of the cages at the Fulton County Fair because I did donate money to them. So I was a 10-year 4H member and an FFA member. Anybody want to? So my key is, is I would like to bring rabbits into town. Granted, rabbits are a lot quieter than dogs. And they are a lot less risky than dogs and animals as they don't carry any diseases. Actually, during my research, they don't carry any. So my presentation is my breeds of choice would be the Flemish Giant, which is 14 pounds and over, French Laps, which adults are 11 pounds and over, and then the Mini Satins, which are no more than four and a half pounds for show rabbits. I would like to take them to show, open shows. I just went to Columbia City not that long ago to look around. And there's also Syracuse. There's quite a few rabbit shows for open. Fulton County used to host them. Ron Riddle used to have a club at the Fulton County Fair where he did rabbit shows as well. My child does do 4H. He does have poultry and he does have rabbits. Once again, open adult rabbit shows. Once again, to help promote rabbits as beef and sheep shows promote their own species. To help local 4Hers find a rabbit of their specific breed as Flemish, French, Mini Satins are a very common breed, but Flemish and French Laps are a dying breed. And then to breed to the standard of perfection from the ARBA. So I have somewhat talked to zoning when I called and made this appointment. I would like to look at for housing, to purchase a 12 by 16 or bigger, building the house, the rabbit cages. It will have two windows and two big French barn doors in the summer. That way the windows can open and we might have a fan to circulate the breeze. And then maybe possibly at least in the winter, like straw and maybe a heater. We'll see. Close enough to where their water source will also be. On page three, is the rabbit hedge plan my husband has to build for the bigger breeds and are breeding those. And then the second page is a 36 by 30 by 18. That's for the bigger breeds. That is also a cage idea. And then we have a six stacker by 36 by 30 by 18, which divide that in half for the smaller breeds. Once again, we live on the corner of Seventh and Pontiac. So we are right by the library. So we would also like to think about putting a privacy fence around the area. That way in case a rabbit cage is not closed all the way, or they lap, march it out of wood, who knows? And the door might be unwatched too. They're not running around. At the same moment, they're within a fence. And then that fence also gives a chance to pull them out of their cage, give a little pimp, a little dog thing and have them run outside for a little bit. I did an example of what I thought out as a fence. And then the publics would come from Smith Farm Stores. I am also looking at the sheds using either someone here in Rochester or down in Peru. So feed would be Timothy Hay treats occasionally. You don't want to overfeed them as their diet is very specific. Feeders and waters, sizes depend on the breed, once again. And then my care plan would be cages with trays will be emptied once a week. Wire cages to be power washed at least monthly. Cardboard encased to protect the pads of each rabbit foot. Daily food and water, water more often, especially in the heat. Fan allotments and then straw and over. So then my breeding and selling pit land would be no more than 25 to 30 permanent residents. And I don't expect to get up to that high. To sell at open shows and other rabbit trees, Facebook rabbit cages, especially more focused on 4Hers. Babies can start to be sold at eight weeks, just like a dog or cat. Rabbits can have litters up from one to 10. Will need to come up with a breeding schedule around events. And there would be no selling of rabbits on our property as that seems to be getting a little bit more dangerous. You never know who's coming over. So the crows for rabbits are, they're quiet. There's no barking, there's no whining, and there's no meowing. They're low maintenance. They do not require a lot of space. They're intelligent and trainable, just like a dog. And rabbits are clean and they date themselves just like cats. The cons are they are delicate. One wrong move, they can break their back pretty easily. Diet is changing, feed is difficult on their bellies. Scratches and digs. So they'll scratch at their, at wood or carpet. And then a specialized that required, one emergency I had with one of our rabbits, with the one rabbit, was I had to take them to follow. That was the closest emergency that took rabbits. My vacation plans would be my brother and nephews will help to take care of the rabbits if we decide to leave town for more than a day. If brother is not available, we be her friends. So carcasses, for my miscellaneous, the carcasses will be removed immediately upon being seen and then taken to brother's property. And then feces, even though it's great for fertilizer, it'll be removed like dogs do. So, and this kind of brings into the topic of poultry in a small way, as all my ordinances are rabbits and poultry. Argus allows rabbits and poultry within their city limits. And so does Bull, Indiana. I reviewed 85% of the city ordinances on American Legal Publishing. Not all the counties or cities were there. Most do not mention rabbits. If they do, they only mention them being classified as livestock and/or farm animal or domesticated pet. They do not give limits or advice. I did notice that poultry was brought up numerous times, whether it be yea or nay, there are more rules for them. So something I had seen, poultry right here. These are the big cities that allow poultry. That didn't have anything to do with mine. However, USDA has classified rabbits as the polt, so they are not under the same guidelines as beef and pig. As rabbits that USDA doesn't have to appear to be a baby. And the definition that I found of livestock is anything that is to be used for meat, fur, or wool, my rabbits, or breeding. Some definitions have the word breeding in it. But if we use breeding, then dogs and cats are labeled as livestock animal as well. My next thing was processing, as I said, USDA specifies rabbits are not classified as livestock. Rabbits are exempt from USDA inspections on swatting. Grades for rabbits are removed in 1995. And that came from the USDA website. And then, once again, here are my Argus and my Bull standards from their personal city ordinances.
All right. Here's my suggestion. You just got it. I'm going to wait the next thirty days to bring it up next week. And then we'll make a decision.
If I may, I don't think you're asking, we don't have anything that limits rabbits, but the part of our ordinances, I think she's talking about is that limits the number of pets.
Number of animals?
Yeah.
See, and when I called about ordinances, because zoning said they would not, when I mentioned the rabbit going into the shed, they said no.
So our ordinance is a household can't have more than five pets, five animals. So that's, I think we're, we're the exception would have to be, is our ordinance, because So that's, I think, were the exception would have to be, is our ordinance, because it specifically says no more than three dogs and no more than five total animals per household.
Unless you get a permit, correct?
Right.
Is how I read it?
Right.
So there's nothing about rabbits whatsoever?
No.
Definitely not.
Or...
Yeah, I think the main ordinance topic here is the number of animals that we're having.
So it's not the approval of rabbits being fair?
Yeah. I don't think we have anything that says you can't have rabbits.
No, the only other thing is if someone classified rabbits as a farm animal, they would likely have that. Or I think it would have to be one of those two. Now, I want to be clear. You're asking about the city ordinances, not the zoning laws. A change to a zoning exception does not happen in front of the city council.
Okay, well, zoning didn't say that, so. I just barely started.
That's fine. No, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear in front, so. Just so that's a different process, that's all.
Okay, now I'll be clear.
So, so another word...
Is she going for the zoning board or what?
If she is asking for more than five pets, then...
Yeah, so...
Then you, or I don't remember if it says that...
City Council.
We did that, yeah.
It's not...
It's the city council.
Yeah, it's a term issue.
But, okay, the city council will do that. If she's asking for any other, because there may be some other restrictions. It's in the zoning code that prevents her from having rabbits, doesn't have anything to do with the number of animals. I'm just saying, we could change the one but not the other.
Right, so she needs to check more thoroughly with the zoning?
Just to be sure. Heather's not here. If she said, well, yeah, the zoning ordinance doesn't allow rabbits because X, then nothing the city council does is going to change that. Short of going through another round of modifying the zoning ordinance, which we get fairly reasonable.
Is that the rabbits area or is that the area?
The area planning commission is chiefly involved in changes of zoning laws. But all the municipalities have input into that.
Yeah.
If it's just a variance from the rule, or it's an exception to the rule, if she just wants a variance, that would be in front of the Rochester city council.
Okay.
That's what I was talking to Heather today. She's unable to come to see me.
So I would dig further with them and see what's...
Well, then I think we also, because what zoning said was farming. And I don't think anybody has a definition of what a farming. Because if you Google a definition of a farming animal, it's anything with four legs. There's your dogs and cats. Then also, if you do a farm animal and you're thinking of breeding, there's your dogs and cats. Then if you also thought about, these rabbits would not be for meat, not in my hands, they would not be, fur or wool.
And those are all arguments that can be made to the BDA if you're looking for a zoning exception. But I think for this board that consists of this month, the question is, are you asking them to let you have more than, more than five pets? Okay, then that's the part they need to own between now and then.
All right, pretty good.
I have one question. With that ordinance with just five pets, I know houses have maybe 12 or 15 cats in their house. So it's not, it's just what people see. But there's also part of that ordinance that you could get a kennel license if you want to breed dogs. So is there a license that you can get for a rabbit tree to breed rabbits?
I don't have an answer for that. This specific ordinance just talks about the number of animals that you can have. And if you want to go beyond that, you need permission from the city council.
Right. So if rabbits are allowed in town, then for her to get more than five, because we have, well, more than two because we've got two cats and a dog, then... Where was I heading with this?
We would need a permit.
Yeah, all we would need is a permit then.
A breeder's permit, at least according to the state of Indiana.
But in the ordinance, it just says kennel, which refers mainly to dogs.
I know, I'm not talking about a kennel license or a kennel or breeder license. I'm just talking strictly the number of animals in a house.
But what I'm saying is that there is a permit that you can't get in town a kennel license for dogs. And I'm just saying that there's an exception that can be had. Now, who would want a kennel on 7th and Pontiac Street? I mean, but a rabbit tree, they don't make, or rabbits, they don't make noise.
Okay, we'll try and, we'll try and have a straightforward approach to this. Before we straighten up what exactly we need to do going forward. Because I'm not real, I'm not thorough. I mean, it's getting really in a gray area here that's really a mess. So I need, we need to talk to Andy, we need to talk to the zoning board and find out what we need to do going forward on that. Okay? So give us some my discussion, we'll get them next meeting. Everybody up here with that group? All right. I'm assuming most of you are here for the nickel plate, one-way street on, I think, just on Hart Street. I assume you're all here applauding the idea. Now, we're here to answer your questions. We are engineers, we've been working on it for how many years?
It's been five years.
Five years. And I sent all of you, all of you, I think, received my personal letter to you to kind of explain the options we had on Hart Street. I know a couple of you had a question. Mitch Hansel from US Science here to answer any questions you might have on that. So, I'm just going to open it up for some more discussion. If you're very passionate one way or another, just, you know, we're here to talk. We're not here to yell at each other, make our point too. We're here to just hopefully answer questions you might have. We may still leave here not as agreeable with one another, but at least we hear our feelings and our views. So, anybody have any questions from the floor that they want to bring up now?
I think I have quite a few questions. I live on the corner of 12th and Park. I own the property going to the north to the next parcel, which would be 1103 Park Street. I own too the outside basement door of that property. The whole property is mine. And I share it with my dad. He lives at 1103. He uses, I personally, on the one-way thing that was proposed, go both ways with me. I mean, I'm on the corner, I can go wherever. He uses 12th or Hart Street to the south daily, multiple times a day. I can see nothing more of an inconvenience for him to have to drive down, out around to Walbash Avenue and back around to pass my house, which is 150 feet away, to go back down 12th Street to get to wherever he's going. We built there as a family in 1938. And here we sit, having to now travel north and only north, now which is pretty much a drag strip. And we were talking to you, Trent, earlier. The speeding traffic does come down, come from north to south quite a bit. It's when they come off of 12th Street, traveling east and they hit Hart Street, you'll just hear them. They'll just nail the gas and see how fast they can get to the bottom of the hill to 10th Street. Somebody's going to get hit there. It's, I mean, this is going to be inevitable. We don't even let my child, who's 13, play, mess around, even with his buddies in any of that area. Like it's just, it's too dangerous. If he is going to go out to the street, even at 13 years old, I watch, I go out to the street with him and make sure that it's safe for him to get on 12th Street. Not on Hart Street, just on 12th Street. And go to Walbash and then take it to the stoplight, cross at the stoplight there. I've seen too many, too many things, too many close calls. I can't say I've ever seen any bad accidents on 9th Street or Park. Comes to, you know, comes to an end there, it comes with teeth, but it is a blind corner. We would never let him cross there. I would, I mean, even if there was a walking trail, he would never use said walking trail. Just too dangerous. Been there too many years. I've lived in that house, at 1103 Park Street since 1987. And we couldn't even as kids really play on that, on that street because of the traffic and the craziness. But the inconvenience of my father, the next-door neighbor, and the commies across the street, we all travel, they all travel south on that street to get to where they're going. Not have to go back through town or however to get to anything south of town. There's nothing, I can't say there's nothing to the north side of town if they want to go to, but, you know, it's just, it's a crazy inconvenience. And the only reason I'm saying this is I'm kind of in the garden. Three weeks ago is the first that I heard of this, when I received a letter that this was even going on. In my mind, the first thing I said was, why would the trail ends at Walbash Avenue? Why are we not going down Walbash Avenue to a stoplight, to a crossing, to the trail that we're ultimately trying to get to? And we're going to re, we're going to readjust everything on the street. And everybody's lives, their parking, everything, as they come and go on a daily basis to make themselves out of those sort of walking trail. Why are we just not hearing that it's going down our street and there's, you know, there's, in our minds, there's other options, safer options. You know, cars coming down, up and down 12th Street. We have a 20 mile an hour zone. Your first sign when you turn onto 12th Street off of Walbash Avenue is past my house, across the tracks, at College Avenue. That's your first 20 mile an hour sign. People turn there and we've seen, literally seen people drag race down. And I talked with Ed one night, I said, can you please just stop by some morning, sit in my yard, back in the yard, because it's crazy. The cars, how they go up and down. And my fear is, on that, I know I'm jumping back and forth doing a lot of different things, but my fear is there, if the trail's going to cross 12th Street, you better stop the traffic and not slow it down. It's crazy, it gets crazy there. And no fault to anybody, you couldn't control it enough, you know. It's just, I actually talked with Tom Butler about four years ago, because there was a volunteer that was driving, he would come past our house. And I mean, when I say as hard as his truck would go, as hard as his truck would go. We, Tom settled it. I mean, it was, Tom handled it in the right way and I, you know, nobody was yelling and screaming, but it was just one of those deals of, this truck's going by. I know he's trying to get someplace urgently and get it, but at what expense? You know, my kid or somebody else's kid or anything out in the street when this is going by. Tom had that fixed and it never, you know, it didn't happen again. Greatly appreciated. But the trail, great, love it. I love the fact that if it comes from, what are we going to call it, 18th Street? I don't know if it's 18th or Mitchell or whatever it is there, over to 12th Street, then I love it. My kid, he has a couple of friends that live along the trail across the way. He can jump on it on his bike, go down there, it's safe. There's never anything crossing there, then we just have to worry about you crossing on 18th Street. I don't know if it's 18th Street or Mitchell Drive or whatever that is there. But anyway, and then he can then go along down the trail from there. Down the Hart Street, I still, I would never even have a use. We would still get him over to Walbash Avenue and get him to the stoplight and let him cross there. That's what he did today, he'd go to the park, to the pool. You know, we went 12th, Walbash, across. Because we just don't, that blind corner, it's narrow there. I mean, I've been sitting there in a vehicle turning to get on the Hart Street and just know that I was going to get prained by a semi coming at me because it's a bottom lot of room. And to have him cross there to get to whatever in the middle and then to cross on there, to me, it's just, it's a dangerous situation. And I just feel that somebody, there's a lot of room to get hurt there, you know. And then just the servants of us, not me, my dad and whoever lives on Hart Street there, they have no access to the, to the south. Everything would have to be via town, 9th Street, or back out around the giant block to get where you just started. You know, it's a small, it's a small strip. You know, so I guess we're just kind of wanting, wanting to know like what, where we stand on that and what we can do.
Yeah, what are the other options?
Yeah, I don't think anybody is against anything. It's just a lot of confusion.
Mitch, I'll address to your question on Walbash here in a second. And first thought was go out of the way. I thought we were going to take that one way south. But then when I talked to Mark McCall and I got a letter of support from him on this, he was involved in our redevelopment commission in the beginning of this project, I believe. He said, if we could do one way north, it'd be better because of the traffic that typically comes off 9th and zooms down Hart Street going south. So that would make better sense. It would create a much more quiet Hart Street from 12th to 9th by going one way north. But I totally get the inconvenience you're, you're brought up.
On my problem, if you're familiar with the corner there.
Yeah.
I have a steep hill, it's a grass hill. We've had cars hit that hill. Coming across the tracks, hit the hill, ricochet and go.
Yeah, how many times does that crossing then hit? It's in the middle of the street.
We have cars hit that crossing.
I mean, it's been hit, I don't know how many times.
And did you put it back now?
No.
It just got hit recently, okay.
Now, I understand that that can all come out, but also then, you know, it's just so hectic right there on that corner. That's, that's our concern, one, is that. The only way I can see to slow the traffic is to stop the traffic. Is by, you know, bringing them to a stop at some point, because my mom always said, the reason why people come down 12th Street so fast is their last stop is at Monroe Street. Now we got a straight shot all the way to Walbash Avenue, we're going for it. I've seen, like I said, both ways. I've seen two cars line up at Monroe Street and drag race to the tracks. But I've seen two cars stop and come across us. Just, and it's just crazy. Now, does that happen all the time? No. And it can happen anywhere as far as people doing that. People are idiots driving anyway. My eyes don't, to slow the traffic is to stop the traffic. Even on Hart Street, to slow the traffic would be to stop the traffic at some point to where they can't just use that as a thoroughfare to get to wherever they're going. Because it seems like they're just, they're cutting, they're trying to beat something, whatever it is, to get to 9th Street or trying to beat something to get to 12th Street and 18th. And I'm probably just as guilty as anybody else of doing that on a different street.
Mitch, you up? Again, Mitch is our engineer that worked on this for Everett and looked at a lot of the options. Can you answer some of your questions here now?
Yes, I apologize. We were originally going to go along the urban property and have route to go all the way up to 9th Street along railroad. But then the businesses along 9th Street had issues with pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, et cetera, going along their businesses. And so they really opposed it. We have to acquire property from them. And so that just unfortunately didn't happen. So then we looked at Walbash and 12th Street. And the issue with it, you know, in our grant is you have to have protection for bicyclists is the main thing. And so we would have had to put the rinn meter posts along, follow 12th Street, kind of in that shoulder area on the south side to protect, you know, eight-year-old kids biking along the street. And then to come up on Walbash Street, we were looking at, beyond the west side, so if you had to cross Walbash Street. And we would have had to widen the sidewalk five foot into the grass, but we still would have been too close to 12th Street. We would have had that five-foot buffer that we need for bicyclists to get out of control and gets off the trails. We would have had to kind of put fencing or something all along that west side of Walbash Street to keep bicyclists out of Walbash Street. And then the worst part was the intersection there. Where the lights have, you've got elevation differences, so it's almost impossible to get wheelchairs up to the ADU ramps. And then it's a wide intersection where people, people cross. And then we would have had to have added pedestrian signal heads and some other things to protect pedestrians as they crossed. And there was just a lot there that wasn't sightwitted. We would have put all the properties on Walbash Street. And it just, we didn't think, was the safest route for students, kids and citizens in general. So Hart Street is the more direct route. We were just looking at the sidewalk along Hart Street and just letting the bicyclists keep it a two-way. Building the sidewalk on Hart Street, letting the bicyclists share the road and the pedestrians walking along the sidewalk. Do you have a crossing along 9th Street? We do have a crossing along Ninth Street, we will have a median barrier in the middle lane, Ninth Street. It has blessed it, so the kids only have to cross twelve feet, sit, look to the right, go another twelve feet, and then get on their way. But, we're looking at sidewalks, and the mayor came up with this one-way route, so that we can have a twelve-foot lane, again, that goes northbound. We would have a, what we call a little shoulder corrigation, similar to what you see on US-31, when we get off the roadway, it shakes you. And so, we have now that they don't make so much noise, but it would shake somebody who would dip off towards the trail, to let them know that they need to steer back right onto the roadway. And we have a big white stripe there, but the main thing is to try and separate the bicyclists and pedestrians from the traffic. Park Street is a lot, I guess, slower, I would think, than Wall Bash Avenue or 12th Street is. And again, a safer route from what we can see, and a lot less traffic than what you have on the other two roads. We were looking at potentially a stop sign at Tenth Street to get them to stop it down, then continue north. That's still a possibility if we're doing the traffic study, and it's allowable, but we could look into some.
It's gonna be a twelve-foot lane, you're not gonna feel comfortable going really fast in that narrow lane, but obviously people might try.
But a stop sign, the possibility there on 12th Street on the east side of the trail for traffic, east and west, is that a possibility?
We have to do a study of that.
Like you have to have a study. We're gonna have to go through the railroad though?
That's a good question.
They start queuing up, but the river doesn't cross 12th Street.
So there it goes across 12th Street?
Yeah, it goes all the way to the trailhead right now.
Yeah.
No.
Tom, in the siding is really wide there. Once you go from 12th to Ninth, it's really wide. And it widens out all the way to Ninth. The issue would be from Eighteenth to 12th. I'm not sure how wide you have to play the bridge.
So, I, I know, I've got, me and Chris talked a little bit, with me coming out of there with eighteen wheelers out of those buildings, I can't go to the north, especially if you put a barrier in the middle of it, and ever make that corner. Because I, I come back to the south to come back around to Wall Bash, because I can't make, I mean, it's almost, I almost can't make it coming to the south, you know, with the, with the semis. But that's his own commercial property in there, so if I'm bringing semis in and out of there, now we made a suggestion, maybe an exemption or something to come to the south. But, that, that's my concern with that, and going across 14, that is a suicide mission across Park Street and 14, because them coming around that curve is a tough one.
I can, I can only say that my kid will never cross that. He'll cross it, he'll cross it.
Even if there's a barrier in the middle, it's gonna be tough.
Have they not done traffic studies? You said, you said we have to do.
For the stops.
And, and have you done traffic studies, like on how much traffic goes on Park Street? How busy is it?
We haven't.
You should, it's, it's busier than what you think, and I think that you don't realize how many people pass through there.
Every time I was driven there.
Well, we lived there, I've been, I'm forty-eight years old, I, I grew up there. I paid, my grandparents built the house. I'm telling you, this is busier than what it was. And if I'm, if they had an exemption, why wouldn't he get an exemption? Now here we go.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's only here, and I understand what he's saying, he is, he is known, or he can have that stuff down there.
Right. His need is three times a year.
Regardless if it's.
The problem is, that is today. You know, if y'all would go in there with some kind of a business, then I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be screwed. But, and, and I understand the, the need to the, for the, the bike trail, I understand that. My concern is going across 14, there's a lot of other issues that's gonna happen, some complications for that proposal going down Park Street.
You're saying 14 to Ninth Street was that?
Yes. Ninth Street. I mean, that's, that's my only concern there.
I mean, as far as me getting in and out, yeah. I'm, today, pretty minimal. And I can, I can fight it and get through, you know, with the RV and the bus and, and all that, but, I mean, when we hook the car to the RV, to the bus, you know, I'm seventy-five feet long, and, so.
And Jim, when I talked about that, he doesn't do it very often, presently anyway.
Right.
If we can have, if we can give him a special permit to accommodate him to go south with bigger equipment, so. You know, by going, if we reverse that one way to south, and I totally get your concern about crossing Ninth Street or 14.25, but if we reverse that and went south one way, you're gonna get, in my opinion, you're gonna get a lot more traffic that we used coming off of Ninth Street and going down Park Street and going south if you wouldn't turn around. You guys think differently, and they could be the other way?
The other thing then too, if you're gonna, if you're gonna divide, we're gonna, let's just say we're gonna divide the, the street connect, okay? Everybody on the east side of the road, especially once you get past Tenth Street.
That's parked off the road.
They, that's, that's where they have to park, even if they're just a tire out in the street, that's where they're parking, which is taking up a couple feet of the street. He has to use my property already to park. And so, what, and if anybody wants to come and visit him, it's, there's, there's a, there's a little runoff, there's perp, yes, but you're still in, you're still out in the streets. You take, you take a foot of that way, now we're, now you're putting a car back into the walking path. You know, so, what are we supposed to do? We have no accommodations for that, without, you know, going to great length and tearing up our yards so that somebody can park, so that we can now lose half of our street going for a walking trail going north.
We're in a similar situation, we live, we're south of, sorry, north of Dave here, and there's a unimproved alley or retired alley that runs to the back of the property that allows us for two parking spaces. So, even though the alley's not technically inactive one, and not technically inactive, because the city won't maintain it, we only have two parking places. So, if you have a situation where you've got a big vehicle, or you've got people coming over, street parking is only access. You got a utility pole on the corner, there's no yard to park in. So, that's a huge issue too, and we're on the east side of the road.
Parking out on the street now, presently current, not supposed to be.
They do.
They do.
There's no, no parking on the.
There's no parking on the street.
But nobody parks there.
No, I mean, on that, on that particular street, it's two-way traffic.
Yeah.
And there should not be anybody parking on the street now. They do, but they shouldn't, that's my point.
They have for a while.
I'm just saying, there's not supposed to be. I'm not saying what's.
They're gonna sign that and say no parking on that street. Either by.
There ain't.
Do they, do they park any on the sides that have to be prohibited by ordinance? No, I'm not saying they can't park along the side, they're just not supposed to have be on the.
Yeah, they're, they're saying that there, one wheel's in the street and one's under grass, because it, it, that's the reason I don't come from the north with semis, because.
Yeah, I understand your point. Yeah, I understand your point. I go truck, carry no weight, I wanna make that turn down there, no matter if there's a barrier down there or not.
That's what people don't have anywhere, though. Their, their houses right at the street, they can't help that.
And that's, that's why we didn't like the sidewalk idea on the west side, because that was gonna take all parking away from you on that side of the road, and it was gonna be tremendously expensive. I wouldn't like it if I were you and lived on the west side. That's when I came up with the one-way idea.
Well, years, years ago, we tried to get a sidewalk put in, when I'm, I'm talking back to the early nineties, down through there, we, my, my uncle lives at the.
You're on the west side?
On the, on the west side, years ago, my uncle.
Yeah, Tom.
But we couldn't have that because of drainage.
Yeah.
Because there's no place to drain, because it would.
It goes across my yard.
It would push it back out.
Yeah, yeah, always has.
She's the poorest hole that gets.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
You're the wetland.
There's no drainage on that street at all, nowhere.
So, it just goes to nat, natural, we, it just, it, so, if we had curbs and sidewalk back then, this is, this is, the city engineer wouldn't allow it, it went through a bunch of stuff, so that got dropped years ago, to be able to do that, because the water would have no place, it would, it would divert it back out into the streets, then we have a flood situation there, and it's one of the lowest spots in, in town, one of the lowest elevations in town, so, everything would collect there.
So, explain to me, on, the street can have a rumble strip and not a curb versus the sidewalk on Wall Bash to be five feet off the street?
So.
So how, how are we gonna allow five feet from the passing traffic to the walking path?
This portion of the trail is unfunded by the DNR, it's a different fund.
Okay, all right, all right, so that, we're not funding it with the DNR?
Right. We've got the rumble strips, again, for the safety, for the traffic.
Right. Well, I, I was trying to figure out how, how it was passable on Park Street, but not on the west.
Who takes care of that if it's not funded?
It doesn't.
Yeah.
It's being funded by DNR.
Okay, so they maintain it, they clean it?
City street, it's still a city. Strips, per se, I'm putting a barrier, you can drive over.
Well, yeah, that, that, the barrier's the problem with the semi, because of the low boy, I can't get across a barrier when I'm carrying it four inches off the ground. And the buses, buses eight inches, I mean, I can get across the barrier, but I can't with somebody, you know?
So, if you do the street there, you're not putting curbs and all that down through there, right?
No.
You're not doing, you're not widening the street or nothing. You're just putting a rumble strip down that.
And I don't necessarily have a problem with, with the street the one way, but, you know, getting across, how, how that's gonna work, I don't, I don't see how that intersection is going to.
It's a big risk.
Four, Nineteen, or Ninth Street, fourteen.
Oh, the tra, the pedestrian.
Yeah, that's, that's my, I don't see how that, I, I really see a light is.
Radio.
But that's still where it's going, the crops, or like the old Rochester Valley is?
No, no, no.
Last fall, it was at the nipple plate meeting, and was told it was all in place, and we were going to extend that railroad. This spring, it was starting, and then, the way they were going, going into the city trail, so how are you planning on connecting to the city trail now? Where were you coming from? I don't know the name of these streets.
Sure. So, Park Street, we're gonna go to the west.
Come down, yeah, come.
Nubianos?
Nubianos.
Yeah, McWig Nelson's a Nubian.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh.
There's Nubian.
And then you're gonna go straight across there to the old, over there, correct?
Correct.
On Ninth Street.
Yes. Across Race Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Long Race Street.
There's a wall beedrail right there, yeah.
It's only running, I was down in Arkansas last fall, and their park system, they run every trail under thoroughfares that aren't controlled. I mean, they, they claim one lawsuit was paid for. So, they build, the tunnel, the walking path goes under every thoroughfare that isn't controlled.
Just like up in.
There's no slowing down, no stopping.
They run everything under.
Well, it's a crossing line in Peru along the street.
There's, there's a crossing line. You have the signs. I mean, that's like.
It's a right. Not on that.
I mean, that is.
Slow down.
Make them.
I know. 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 But if you created, like, whatever this was on Ninth Street, then is it this right here?
Lose funding, so you say.
You lose funding if you had out your middle part of it?
Yeah. I would do it today.
Yeah, but if you extend it to the 12th Street, you need to, you have to back to the connection.
I don't, there might be a period.
Aww. Connecting, it's already existing track. It's widely crossed around. Yes, the connection is by sign, so it's like natural. I mean, I'm asking, I'm just trying to understand.
You really want a wheelchair going down, good deal?
DNR doesn't.
You're not a bridge.
It's like, how can you do this? You don't have to do that, but it sounds like there are more people not...
You know, you know, the original project was supposed to be on the others. And then it was supposed to cross there at Wilson's. So imagine being at Wilson's right over there, and having everybody going there. When we walked that, two years ago, when we walked that, two or three years ago, we walked around there, and my first thought was, okay, if I was Wilson's, do I want bike person, oh my god, no, that's gonna be even worse. We did attempt to, and, and we talked with the DNR person to come down main, I mean, to us, we thought, as citizens of Rochester, hey, why can't we just use Ninth Street's sidewalk and come down to Wallbach and cross there where the light is? It makes perfect sense to us. Well, you, you really don't realize until you're there and you're thinking how deep it is, as to what's in the way. And what, and, and, because then you're talking, you know, from down there, you're talking the, the bank, you're talking the, uh, post office, you're talking, you know, all of these other, other things. And, and, and we did walk Wallbach. And Wallbach is a very narrow street, already busy on that Park Street, okay? And, and then, you wanna cross to where that light is already at, so which side of Wallbach do you want to adjust? Well, it'd be really smart to be on the, on the east side. Well, now, golly gee, do you know that that's where all the, all the fire hydrant, fire hydrants are? Okay, so now, to meet the criteria of what is called not, a, a path, a by path, which is, is, is not, you know, a sidewalk, is not this, and is not that. It was like, I mean, we really struggled. So it's not like as if this is something that, that, I mean, any, any ideas, I mean, if we can put Parks, if Park Street needs to go the one way, the other direction than what we're thinking, and that would make everybody's life so much easier, why not? If that's the only, only thing that's an issue, please let us know that that's it.
That's not, no.
But, but, you got another idea, I mean, because now what has happened since then is that the railroad is purchased now. Okay? So that's a whole nother issue, okay? Now we don't have a vacant railroad, or a railroad that is just, you know, barely used, that, that railroad is purchased. So now, the, the people that purchased that railroad has a different criteria than, than when it started years ago. So, yeah, it'd be nice to know, you know, is there another path? Not, not, not really, because of crossing Ninth Street to get it to the other side to connect. And, and, reality is, is it's all, uh, a nicer way to live in Rochester, uh, is, is ultimately the attempt by everybody.
So, so, so we're gonna move the fire hydrant at the end of Park Street to do this?
One fire hydrant is a lot better than four.
There's four, there's four fire hydrants on the corner of Wallbach?
No, it's not the corner, it's coming down 12th Street and coming down, and there's a bunch of utilities on, on, on that side, yes, and else, it's also, you know.
Can we do local traffic, only on Park Street?
Yeah.
Only allow local traffic? You can say that as one.
Yeah, why not?
How are we gonna enforce that?
Yeah.
Are we gonna stop people to make sure they live on Park Street? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to...
You guys, you guys, years ago, changed, changed, uh, Ford Street's, uh, uh, speed, twice. I found that out coming home from work, and I was like oblivious. You know, and I was like, really? All these years I've been speeding? Oh my gosh, I had no idea. And up until I got on the city council, and the conversation actually happened, that I realized that, oh, you know what, it was changed. So, why not Park, why, would, would that be an answer for you guys that live there? It is to not allow me to just go down there for the half of it. Unless I'm coming to visit you, you don't, you don't, and, 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 let's discuss it.
So, is there another?
Are you gonna change the bus route?
To make it so people don't want to go down. I mean, you can do something, I mean, I would picture it, but you can do some signs, do some things that make sense to them possibly. I'm just, I'm just trying to pick out my options.
So, so, the question I've got is, the alley to the east of Park Street?
Yes, yes, that's exactly what I was gonna say.
So, the interim discussed that, but the officer doesn't wanna go by there.
They only are there seasonally. And that could buy them a job.
So, so then, have you, have you looked into that?
Looked at that. So you've got, maybe a ten foot wide alley?
Yep.
And so, if a car's coming down there, there's nowhere for a bicycle to go.
To go, right.
Then to go, you jump in.
Could we don't make it no vehicle traffic?
So then, we're limiting an access to...
The house.
The people who use, access the alley for more, it's real, southern.
Yeah, there's three houses too. So what, can we give them a special exception?
Ooh. Is there any way to police that?
I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't...
Those exceptions, I don't...
You know, I, I don't have, I don't have a big issue with the one way street, as much as I got with the kids crossing over Ninth Street. I, I got a big problem with them crossing that with no light, because somebody will get it.
Immediate there.
I'm telling you, have you ever sat, went out there?
Sit down there one time, and watch you come around that curve there.
I got, I get more number one symbols when I come out of that street than anybody else.
Couldn't just be just...
Well, I'm, I'm gonna park it right in the middle of the street on one of these things. That's right.
We have designed that cross, and we have saved as possible. Okay, like, the issue is, again, safety, and so, you're concerned about traffic racing down Park Street, and my concern is, if we keep it two way, and those traffic is still racing down Park Street, and we have kids walking along there, or biking along there, that's not as safe as if we only have one lane, and we're regging where they're at, and these kids have eight to nine foot to get away from that traffic, to walk.
Do you know which way that bus goes on that street?
The opposite.
Do you know which way the bus goes?
No.
That goes there every day. It don't go that way, like, you want it the one way to go, it comes this way.
But is it not your switching the bus?
I've had semis come down 10th Street, they can't turn north. I have to move my car so they can turn south.
That's funny.
Is that you?
Yep, you know who it is now.
But I, I don't think it's just this, they're trying to go north.
Trying to go north?
Yeah, off of 10th. They can't make it because of the poles and the fire hydrants.
Uh-uh, because, I got fifty foot lowway, and it's actually the back, and I gotta have it all.
Okay, we need to, we got a couple more things to cover. Mitch, where we at, what, what needs to happen? Um, I know we talked to Jody, and she said the very latest we can have a vote on this, or approval to this. Move the project forward would be a month from now, at our next meeting. Uh, I don't, typically, I'm against doing three readings at one night, yet having unanimous decision by all of us to approve something. Uh, so I just talked to Brian. Here's my suggestion, uh, and I, I, I don't think there's any way we're gonna make a decision that's gonna be, make everybody happy. Um, but tonight, we do two readings of this ordinance to, to, uh, approve the one way north, have the third reading and the vote four weeks from now. We will consider any, I don't know what we can consider, because we've looked at every option, we're about to kill this project, it's what we're looking at. We're, we'll have to have further discussion, so... I don't think anybody wants the project killed.
No.
I don't think that. I'm truly not saying, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what, what, you know... And this gives us a lot to have more discussion with you guys, and I'm open to having a meeting with all of you, and we'll bring as many as we can in the, you know...
It feels like it's set in stone, though, it feels like we're, we're just fighting against stuff.
Well, the problem is, I'd love to have another option for you.
Yeah.
I really would.
Well, just tell us that, if, if it's pointless for us to come here and, and give us your, our, our opinion, just tell us that, so we won't keep rattling here and...
We came up, we came up with a new idea two weeks ago, so I'm not saying we, we can't come up with another idea, I'm just saying that I don't want to railroad this through, like, you know what I'm saying?
So, have we looked at widening the alley to the east? It's making right away that, there's bomb up right there. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to pick out, out of the box.
And I, I, I understand your concerns, and, and I understand the wanting and having to go around, except, we wouldn't understand that. And we, we'd be more than happy to look at a stop sign on 10th Street, we'd be more than happy to look at a, um...
Stop sign on 12th Street.
By 12th Street, yeah.
We'd be more than happy to look at, um, even, um, walkers, or, or, I'm sorry, um...
How big is the, is it, 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 is it?
I don't think, it'd be a more to worse thing, I, and, and we've talked about, you know, and the other, the other thing I mentioned to you was, you know, you had him on speed dial, or texting me, hey, I'm gonna go get the one way here today.
Right.
You know, and, just so we know.
Right. Yeah, just, just courtesy of him.
Right, basically, that would be the other thing, but, uh, it, yeah, I wish there was, I really wish there was another, another option, but I've, I've been involved in these meetings, you know, last year, and I know how difficult it's been to try and come up with a plan that, and this is absolutely the last option we have, like, except for the free for all into the 12th Street, and let people, so I don't like that. I, I honestly agree with everyone, but it's not, no word, no matter where you put it across Ninth Street, it's, it's gonna be safe.
And how do you look at going over the top?
But here's the other thing, I come down 350 south in the town, when I come up from the south, I turn 31 into 350, and I zoom across that path at forty-five, fifty miles an hour. Now there's stop signs for the bikers and for the walkers, but if they don't obey them, I'm gonna nail them.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of safety issues from here to Kokomo, and South Kokomo, where the trail goes, there's a lot of safety issues, and a lot of different places. So Ninth Street isn't gonna be unique in that at all.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you, there's a lot of traffic.
I, I, I totally get that.
That, that maybe is, I'm, I'm telling you, it's been more than once.
They could have really looked at a lot more alert signage on each side of that, so it might cross the line. So what we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna do two readings, we'll vote on this in four weeks, it may not pass. I mean, we're gonna listen to you, and, but, we're gonna look at the options, um, that we talked about as far as signage and, and extra stop signs at different places and so forth. That was not in our thought process before you guys came tonight, so I appreciate you bringing the alertness to us on the, the speed on 12th Street and the other issues. Uh, so, Mitch, we'll work on what we can do to make it as good as we possibly can, but I hate to kill the project, we've got a lot of net, a lot of money invested, USI takes a lot of money on this, I mean, I'd love to have other people on the bus.
I, I do have one question for all you guys, though. If the one way went the other way, would you feel...
The better or worse?
I don't think, I don't think, I think that's...
That's neither here nor there.
No.
Obviously, it's a bad...
I appreciate it, but no, I don't think that...
It, that, I'm the only one, I'm the only one that's gonna be affected, and I'm not, yeah, I got tractors and stuff in.
Well, and I just felt like that one way south was gonna coddle a lot more people to turn on Ninth and Speed, and they did their worst.
And it's, and it will.
Which forced them to go south.
And as for somebody that's used the trail with children, and with a dog, and on rollerblades, okay? If I was to come up at that spot, personally, what I would do is say, what kind of fool made this design? And I would go down to the stop, and I would personally go down to the stop.
Yeah, because it's a wider street.
And, and use the light, because my child is both young and...
Yeah, I understand that, I understand.
I really would.
She's going downhill.
Okay, I, I, but we don't have any other option as to why, because even that path, when we walked with the DNR guy that knows all the rules and all the regulations, because we did try, even temporary, even car, it was like, ah, it can't work because of the width, because of, of that, that code that you had to stay in, which, trust me, we were like, are you serious? Um, you know, and I would, I would look at that light and say, it's only a few more blocks, let's go down there and let's cross, and we're on the same path we're attempting to go.
Right.
I, I mean, I would, um, as a parent that, that cared about...
So, so with this all being said, and you're meet, or you have to vote on it by the next meeting, when is this gonna go, when is this gonna go into effect, or what?
With the construction, all the construction, I might...
Um, so yes, we would, if this gets approved, we would bid out in July, the circuit can start, obviously, this will be this year, be completed, um, it'll be somewhere next year.
So about a year from now would be, June, July, next year, it could be completed?
But when will the one way start?
Um, probably not till...
Uh, maybe here this year, but probably spring next year.
You hear that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're gonna do the two readings, and we're gonna, we need to move along, we got some other things, um, and then we'll, uh, we'll look at, you know, ways to make it safer, ways to stop that traffic, um, and then we'll see, you know, and, you know, I'm not gonna say that in advance, we'll, we'll decide that in a month and go from there. Anything else you wanna add before we read the ordinance? Well, this ordinance is this one right here, right? So the only thing we can do is change the one way. We can't add, I mean, stop signs, and homeless groups, it'll be all up to USI.
Right, right.
So the only thing that this group can approve is just changing, breaking that one way street. Hopefully, but we can't, USI's gotta come up with some of these extra safety issues that can freeze to the...
Well, we're, you know, yeah, yeah. So, let's go ahead and, Brian, you were taking much, making much of the first reading ordinance, 12-24, if I don't mind?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It doesn't matter. It, no, it doesn't matter.
Okay, um, you have a reading? Oh, all favor say aye?
Ordinance number 12 dash 224, ordinance to limit traffic.
Okay, so the second reading, second reading was moved by Brian Goodson, second in its entirety. Hold group, say aye?
Aye.
Can I vote no, to say, just if I feel like we need more information, and then everybody's questions are answered, then on the third...
That'll be the third reading in a month.
Can I vote yes, then, if we feel like we, everybody's like...
We're, we're still moving forward, you're voting yes on the second reading only, so we're agreeing to occur four, four weeks from now.
And that's when it's official.
That's when we would vote to approve or not to approve. So we're not approving anything except giving the second reading out of the way, so that we can have another month, and then we'll do the third final meeting, and then vote on what matters.
Yeah, I would hide, but, obviously, that's a lot of question.
Right.
I don't wanna kill the project either, but I wanna make sure it looks like we're...
So all favor, please, fast, right?
Ordinance number 12 dash 224, ordinance to limit traffic. Whereas the common council of the city of Rochester determined that certain portions of the city's ordinance is evolving, one way street should be amended to improve public safety, now therefore be ordained by the common council of the city of Rochester pursuant to its authority under IC 9-21-1-3, sub 8 and sub 4, that's set in chapter 75, schedule 4 of the code of ordinance for the city of Rochester is hereby amended as follows, Park Street through 12th Streets and Ninth Streets shall be limited to northbound traffic only.
All right, so we'll have our third reading in four weeks, or, at our next council meeting, I think until the 25th of June, and then we'll vote on the project. All right, um...
I tried to, 12th Street, 12th Street, I'm, is railroad, is that...
I have some question, ask me.
Like, was nickel plate's decision, or his decision, this, I always thought Detroit was that by the decision, so the rail actually is, which now, either close to the road, it on 18th Street, after the truck, that was by the...
The only thing I heard was because of the flack from previous persons, that they, you know, nickel plate trail decided to keep it on the county property instead of city property. I don't know if that is true, that's the rumor I heard.
It doesn't seem very safe.
I agree completely.
It's a real stop and go, city.
I can't imagine being in there.
About a train.
What's the deal with that thing?
It's too close to the road.
Need to be moved? Can we move it? Can we move it? Whose is it?
I'm, I'm assuming that the nickel plate group was the one that rented that, I know they did the last one.
And they placed it?
And they placed it in the parking lot there, by the entrance going up to the...
It's closed, yeah.
I've got a whole...
So we need to talk about nickel plate, and...
I'll, I'll, I'll do that right now.
All right, we gotta move forward, we're gonna be here all night.
The street is now at the intersection. Eighteenth Street and the railroad is that...
I have some questions to ask you.
Like the nickel plate decision or his decision yesterday. I always thought Detroit, but was that by the decision? So the rail actually is, which now, either close to the road or on 18th Street after the truck.
The only thing I heard was because of the flack from previous persons, that they, you know, the nickel plate trail decided to keep it on the county property instead of city property. I don't know if that is true. That's the rumor I heard.
It doesn't seem very safe.
I agree completely.
It's a real stop and go situation.
I can't imagine being in there.
How about a train?
What's the deal with that thing?
It's too close to the road.
Need to be moved? Can we move it? Can we move it? Whose is it?
I'm assuming that the nickel plate group is the one that rented that. I know they did the last one.
And they placed it?
And they placed it in the parking lot there by the entrance going up to the...
It's closed.
I've got a whole...
So we need to talk to about nickel plate and...
I'll do that right now.
All right, we gotta move forward. We're gonna be here all night. Greg, give your thoughts.
I do. Yeah, I just want to...
I'm gonna have Greg with Keller Development. Do a brief, and ask him what his request is. I talked to him briefly. We're taking information tonight and what they, what they're wishing to have a great dream.
Certainly, thank you very much. My name's Greg Majeski, I'm with Keller Development. We are a developer, general contractor, property manager based in Fort Wayne. We are proposing to construct a senior, independent, affordable apartment community at properties at 1329 College Avenue and the associated parcels. There's four or five different parcels in that area, totaling about 4.1 acres. We are gonna have a few requests coming down the pipeline between now and the end of July. So this evening, I appreciate the chance to just give you a brief summary to respect the rest of the evening and what's on the agenda. To tell you about this project, what we're asking for is to take your concerns and any questions so that we can fully address them at the time we're actually on the agenda to have an action taken. So, just about us, we're a family-owned company based in Fort Wayne, founded in 1957. We do communities like this throughout the state of Indiana, as far south as the Ohio River, as far north as about the Michigan line up in Angola. We have over 50 of these that we've developed and built. We also manage them with our affiliate company. We're intending to do the same thing here. We want to do senior housing, which is defined as people 55 and older. We are looking at doing 35 units in a single building. It would be two stories certified by an elevator, fully sprinkled. That's a bit smaller in scope than the last time we met with you, we met with Mayor Odell. I spoke with councilman Smith about this a little bit. We're finding that this property is challenging in terms of topography, so we had to scale back. The 35 is what we are going to propose. Two bedroom units, we will have full kitchen, full bathroom, washer dryer in the unit. We have an onsite leasing office, onsite community space. We'll have some outdoor areas too, like a, you know, daycare shelter and a fenced dog area. We will be requesting a zoning change to accommodate this. Right now, the property is owned R1, we need R2 to accommodate. We will also be requesting tax abatement. The reason for that is that we are applying for something called the rental housing tax credit, which is administered by the state of Indiana on an annual basis. It is a competitive program, and if we receive these tax credits, we sell them to investors to finance 85% give or take of the total development cost. So it's very important for this specific project, and part of what the state wants to see is a local financial contribution, but also it will assist with the long-term sustainability of the development. It has to stand on its own. We, as a company, are not injecting it with cash so that it can continue to operate. It will be essentially its own entity, generating its own revenue, paying its own bills, indebted out, and we keep these long-term. We are a small-time developer, we keep what we build. That's what we intend to do here. As far as the affordability of it goes, the rents will be set to be affordable to people, seniors of modest incomes, and that's really the extent of the program. There's no subsidy, there's no, you know, public benefit to people living there. The rents will be what they are, and they're gonna range between about, I'm gonna get these numbers, about $460 to $835 per month. So attainable to people, especially if they're on fixed incomes. And the program says, "We will do all of this as long as we make it affordable to people of modest means." That's defined as households making up to 80% of the Fulton County median income. Because we're serving seniors, we will be serving mostly single-person households, a few two-person households. The income limit for a single person is $45,440 annually. For a two-person household, that's $51,920 annually. And for seniors who are either retired, or maybe still working, or have a pension or savings or something like that, we find that once you're into that upper age bracket, it's very easy for someone to qualify into this program, even if they're not typically what's, who would be considerably certified for housing. So with all that said, so to be respectful of your time, I welcome any questions, concerns, other details. I'm prepared to get as into the weeds as you'd like tonight, but I also understand that you're not gonna take any action. We've also been here for two hours, so...
I talked to Greg briefly before, and I have talked to Baker Tilly, and they're not the only developer that's looking to do something here in Fulton County, according to Rochester. The Tiff district, the abatement question or request, all that has to be laid out in ways that I don't think any of us up here understand completely. So we're relying on professionals, Baker Tilly and Craig Devol, to kind of lead us down, offer regimens, you know, how that affects what we need to do on Tiff's side and so forth. I have a meeting I'm trying to get scheduled with them so that we have a greater understanding of what we need to do, not only with you but with other developers, that I think would be prudent before we act on this. But I am familiar, as we've met before, with what they're wanting, similar to what other developers are wanting as well. So I told him to make the presentation. We're gonna look at this in four weeks in our next meeting, make the decision, but then we'll have more information from our professionals. Greg, you seem okay with that, sort of timeline standpoint?
Yeah, I do want to just make one more point, since tax abatement seems to be where the most questions might come from, is that abatement is for the improvements only. Right now, this property is not improved, except for a shed that I think is contributing about $60 annually to the city's tax revenue. So the taxes would continue to be paid basically as they are right now, even if abatement is granted, and then as soon as that wears off, we are putting in a significant amount of investment in improving the property.
And if I understand correctly, any abatement we offer, because there is a local match to this program, any abatement we offer can be applied toward the local match, whether the developer, that what you understand?
Yeah, so the benefit is twofold. It's a small project, and it's limited in the revenue it can generate because of its serving. So anything that helps offset the operating costs is going to benefit the project, help us keep it looking nice, operating smoothly long-term. But to compete for this program and to receive that funding, the state prioritizes a local financial contribution, and the savings from the tax abatement accounts, goes directly towards that. And that, just to give you an example, that scoring category, the financial contribution, is worth about four points on 150-point rubric. We have won and lost projects by half, a second, quarter of a point. So it's a very cutthroat competition. The other developer that we've spoken with is in the same boat. I don't know who it is, but I imagine that they probably told you kind of the same thing. And we can't, we have to try to account for any possible point to score this, to get funded, because otherwise, 85% of the construction budget is not there, and the project can't happen. That's two very important mistakes to make.
Question, like in your note, in your letter, it says, "A full 10-year property tax abatement," that's 100%. Is that what they expect, or is it gonna be less than 100%?
That is what we are asking for, and I say that with my hands hella humbly, because it is a very big ask. We fully acknowledge that. We've done it several times in some other communities recently. We've found that on an unimproved property, it's less than asked because it's not generating the revenue right now, but it doesn't have to be that. We could do a more typical step-in abatement. I certainly don't want to compare you to Fort Wayne, but the city of Fort Wayne realized that if they want to win funding from this program, they need to come up with something. So they came up with a front-loaded abatement schedule, specifically for projects like this, where it's maybe a full abatement in years one through five, and then stepping down 50, 40, 30, in the five years following.
And that would not disqualify you from being able to...
No, no, the more savings we can demonstrate, the better for our application, but it certainly doesn't have to be all or nothing.
And the abatement process is, what we've been told by Baker Tilly, is every project stands on its own merit. We have to look at it from our standpoint, what the benefit is to our community, what the cost that we might incur getting infrastructure into your project. All those things come into play as far as, and then we basically set whatever abatement schedule we want, and offer them back. So that's why we need some professional help on this, on all these areas, to be able to be fair to you, for any developers. Anything else for Greg?
Would it be possible for, past two years, if you'd be all of us, list of the projects, very cities?
Absolutely, yeah.
And here's the other thing that we've fallen into, I don't want to say fallen into, but a lot of these projects are privately owned, landowners that really have chosen the developer. We have no say in the developer. I mean, if the landowner chooses you, they choose you. We can't come in and say, "Oh, you got it," because it's not our decision to make. Am I correct in saying that?
Right, yeah, we're a private company. We had an opportunity with a landowner in this particular location. We kind of had to strike while the iron was hot. The timeframe is faster than we would want it. State set this policy in March, we got an application due in July. They kind of put us in a bind, but because this is what we do, and we feel like we're pretty good at it, we are trying to make it happen.
I get it, I get it. Too stressed by this, so... All right, thank you, Greg. Anything else for you?
Greg, why you the 80% AMI instead of going 65 for your funding? So, the program expanded about five years ago to allow us to go up to 80, as long as the average of everybody is not bigger than 60. So, the numbers get weird, but we will have a range of people that's just the top. So we will have people below that, we'll have people in between. They will have to have the means to pay the rent. You know, if you're making no money, you're not qualified to live there. But that's, that's kind of how it benefits the range of people. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg. Dr. Hoff.
Sorry.
Sorry it's been so long.
Sorry.
You want us to make a presentation, you or Michael?
Uh, Michael's appropriate.
That's, you go ahead and make it.
I am requesting tax abatement for the old building. I've been dealing with a national company for the last six months or so, and we've finally gotten things worked out, where they would be on the bottom floor, which is about 5,000 square feet, and they will put apartments on the two floors above that, with an elevator to make it accessible for everybody. The renovation costs are about a half a million. So I'd like that tax abatement for 10 years. Anybody that's had any experience with the old downtown buildings, it's expensive. It's a lot easier to build something new on the edge of town. So anyhow, we need all the help we can get for the downtown. The, they will have about 20 employees, they think, and it looks like probably an annual payroll of about a million and a half.
About 75,000. Yeah. All right. I did call Baker Tilly today on this, ask Heidi, who's an expert in Tiff and abatements, and through the scenario I've heard, I will give you my perspective on this. Here's another situation where a project has to stand on its own merit. We have several factors in this that I think benefit this community. One, we have 20 pretty high-paying jobs. We have six units of housing. We have a downtown in Eaton's Park that this can provide. The one thing she would suggest to me, because we have, the downtown Tiff has an 18-year life left to it. She would say, she told me, "I would pull that parcel out and then renew it," so they'd have a new 25-year life. If you look at the numbers, if we give them 100% abatement, it's about, on the max, $20,000 in a year. We'll be missing out on property tax income for 10 years, but then the remaining 15 years, we can get that. So it's kind of like, we're kind of investing in this community as well by giving that, or into the downtown. She felt like that was a very acceptable ask, and I do too. Like I said, this is one of those cases where the community is benefiting largely, because of the number of employees. And Greg, no offense to your project, but these are two totally different types of projects. And we have similar projects we have to look at along your lines that we have to have further consultation on. So I am, I mean, this is your guys' decision, but, you know, any thoughts or discussion about that? These 20 employees, are they gonna be local individuals, or are they gonna be coming from outer town?
They'll be local.
Local?
Yeah.
Do you got a timeframe?
Um, we would start probably within 30 days, 60 days max. We think it would take six months to get it done. Gotta redo the whole outside of the building naturally.
Do you want to cover those?
The old Masonic doors.
Yeah, Masonic.
So the two options for the outside is, one, if we're trying to see if we can get the veneer that's on it now, if we can get that matched. If we can, then we'll repair that. If we can't, then we'll take all of that off and get back down to the bricks, and then go from there, figure out what to do with that.
And you said it was commercial on the bottom, and then two floors of apartments?
Yes. Four apartments on the second floor and two on the...
Keeping the Masonic lighting on the top floor?
Yes. Andy, are there anything we can know on our end as far as, mainly, you're gonna straight approve, or we'll work out details?
First step is you have to declare the property in an economic revitalization area. That's a declaratory resolution. Then you have to have a public hearing and put out notice. And then only after a public hearing, you can pass a confirmatory resolution. And only then do you have to... Historically, there are two ways communities do this. Number one, petitioners hire attorneys to bring out requests. They prepare the ordinance, and they prepare the second ordinance, and the city's responsibility is to put out the public notice that there's gonna be public hearings. The other way to do it, larger communities that have larger staff in the clerk treasurer's office, they have a packet of forms. I just looked up, St. Joseph's County has a packet of forms where someone can do this the right way, and they charge $400 to make the request, because it's grand, it's a loan. And so, in the past, we have never gotten enough of them to, I don't think the clerk treasurer's office has ever had four. But in the past, the petitioner has always prepared both examples in the ordinance, so we have to have legal descriptions in that ordinance. We don't just list it right in a street address approximately. We have to have the legal descriptions in the ordinance, because it has to go through the attorney's office and have to write it in the ERA. Heidi was probably saying this, she said we should re-designate this new, this particular property as an ERA, so it has the... I didn't talk to this, but what she was referring to. But it's a two-resolution process, so you can't approve an abatement by simple motion, or there's not nearly enough information. One of the things that the petitioner has to provide is a statement of benefits. He includes some of those things in letters, he's mentioned a few, but that really needs to be ironed out. There's some communities who say, "We want that statement of benefits upfront before either resolution," so you definitely have to have a written statement of benefits, like what's it gonna cost, who's it gonna hire. If the whole of the future annual confirmations of that require reference to the statement of benefits, so when it comes time to renew that, you look at, if there's a renewal request, you have a benchmark, and you can say, "Okay, you said the project is X, employee is gonna be people, how did that work out?" And that is something down the line, that's kind of involved. It's a two-resolution process, not a letter and a motion.
And you can actually designate one property that cannot be...
Yes, you have to get it, because it doesn't...
In one meeting?
Do what?
In that...
And that becomes in one meeting, as long as you have a public meeting.
No, because you have to publish notice for that here. That's a, we're in a public hearing that requires a notice, so you can't... The notice says, "We've passed a declaratory resolution, we will consider a confirmatory resolution, the A and B," so you can't do it at one, because the notice would be incorrect. You can't, you can't say, "We might pass both in one notice."
And there is a form for the statement of benefits, the problem is being one, so it's a statement of benefits.
How foolish of me to think this could be a simple thing.
From that word.
So, uh, so if we don't, we're just allowed to take this course two months, I would think that time is of the essence, so is it possible for us to get together, so we get that together in a week, meet again next Tuesday, and then call the...
I don't know how long it's going to take, to get the, get the, the notice.
We can still do it after the resumé. I mean, we, I would assume it's okay, we can speak and say, "I like this idea," and probably go and support it, help us get through the steps here, and we'll help, help at the end. And I don't have to wait until they, if they start handling it, that, that doesn't mean they, that doesn't exclude them from getting the petition, right?
Well, I don't, I'm not giving advice to the petitioner, I'm giving advice to you.
Okay.
And the ordinance, I'm sorry, the state statute says, the statement of benefits has to be filed with the body before beginning redevelopment or rehabilitation, or before installing any equipment, if it's a, it's a...
Okay, alright, so go ahead.
We have to add the statement of benefits.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, yeah, Rock, this black Jeep has its windows down out there. It's not raining just yet, but it's getting ready to. Why don't you take care of itself, we're a walkout.
So, it's, right now, it's out of our hands, it's for the petitioner to get more ducks lined up. And then, when we have, when Beth has given what she needs to make public notice, we slide the timeline, we have a special meeting to try and expedite this as fast as we can.
Sure, you can, you can do a special meeting, but, but it takes, it takes two meetings and enough time between them.
Because I don't think he wants to wait two months.
I'd rather not, but we'll do whatever.
We're not, we're not, we're not controlling when he starts the work.
Right.
But if he wants the abatement, he may want to talk to his attorney about the dangers of starting the project, and then ask him for the abatement later.
Okay, so, we'll wait to hear from a combination of you three, Andy, you, or your attorney, or whoever, Beth, make sure we're ready to satisfy all the, I guess, not all the eyes, and then we can move forward with the special meeting. And if we can't get it done, then maybe right after, or maybe a week or so after our next breather meeting, we can do the second meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Sure.
Doc?
Yep.
Do it again, it could happen, but...
Yep, appreciate it.
Alright. Anything else on that?
So, Andy's going to tell me what I need to do.
Yeah, you need, you need to call McKenzie, that's what you need to do.
Actually, you need to call McKenzie.
He's our attorney.
She told me to talk to him.
Okay, moving on.
Mine or mine?
Yeah, we have some tax abatements that we need to certify, continuation. Brian, I'll let you, you can look over those, kind of lead us through the process.
Yeah, we've got Top Industries, on their SB one, uh, CF one, the estimated salaries of two point two again, they're five point nine. Sixty-one employees, they have sixty-one employees. Tops is continuing to, to perform, if you want to look at, look at those. I don't see any reason why not to continue that, it's nearing its end as well. We have Rochester Metal Products as well.
Can we do them all at one time?
Yeah. So, if you want, so you can pass it, and that's, that's the original copy, the SB signs, if you want to look at that.
But Brian's, Brian's the one that has the...
Yeah.
Is this just a second?
For Brian and I, huh?
Let's just continue.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I said Brian.
Yeah, we, we review it and make sure they're still fulfilling, like they have the type, employees and cut salary, and just...
And it's done in...
Were they? Oh, they're in your packet.
Okay, so we've already, it's going to prove it's just a recertification or whatever.
Yeah, this year's nineteen percent, and then next year, it's nine percent, and then it's done.
Yeah. So, I would make a motion to extend Top's abatement.
I'm sorry, or, or you did?
Yeah, that's the one. Alright.
Aye.
Okay, the next one, we march Rochester Metal Corp. Employees, two eighty-one, still two eighty-one. Salaries, estimated eleven eight, eleven million eight fifty-nine, and they're over sixteen, almost seventeen million. So, they're, they're maintaining well, so I would also make a motion to extend Rochester Metals' abatement.
Bob, second it?
And then, the last one is power transmission. They're, they're on a smaller scale, but they're continuing to, I mean, they haven't dropped anyone. Their salaries are two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and ninety-sixty-one.
It started zero, and then they, I mean, it's like they started zero, and then they increased.
Yeah, because they started from scratch. Is this the one that, they're about, this one's almost, is this, how many were you at?
No, that was a newer one.
This is a newer one?
Rochester Metals is the other one that's going to be done soon.
Yeah. Again, I would make a motion that we extend power transmission components as well.
One second.
Okay, any other new business? Good.
Uh, we'll talk about sidewalk safety next.
Sure. Good for me.
There will be a conversation about sidewalk safety.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Oh, you went in, okay, alright. Deputy Fire Chief, DeBois.
Hello? Looks like we had, the month of April, one structure fired in the city, two mutual aids to Liberty Township, two to Henry Township, four fire alarms in the city, three in the township, six grass fires in the township, and two in Newcastle Township, one vehicle fire in the city, one in Richland Township, spoken odor complaints, two in the city, accidents, we serviced four in the city, two in Rochester Township, two in Newcastle, one in Richland. Medical assist of eighteen in the city, nine in Rochester Township, two in Newcastle, four in Richland, one gas bill in the city, one CO check, one service call, and one canceled call, for a total run number of seventy runs in the month of April.
You have my report, let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Doing a good job.
Okay.
For the sake of saving time.
Yes, absolutely.
Street Department. Good evening. Just a few things I'd like to talk about. One, as far as the report goes, we started the banner swap-out today, from the military banners to the artwork. My guys stayed overtime tonight, we're half-done, we'll get the other half done tomorrow, so it'll be a two-day swap-out. So, if you get any phone calls, America, then you know how to answer that now. This past week had three of our people from the Street Department, and six from the wastewater and CDL training all week, so unfortunately, I meant, half of my crew was involved in this, and so a lot of, like, bag pickup got delayed, and they actually, we knocked all that out today. I have two trucks that I ordered back in December, just got notified that they've issued the VIN numbers, which means that they're going to start production on those trucks, and I should have them within the next four to six weeks, and then they will go to get the dump bits put on. We also, just in the last week, received our air burner that we ordered, that will take care of burning all of our brush that we collect on a daily basis, and when we have storms. And I don't know if I've talked to the city council, I know I've talked to the, the Board of Works about this, but this unit looks a lot like a big roll-off dumpster. It's got an engine on the end that drives an impeller that blows air across the top of it, and also into the box. It re-burns the smoke, so it burns like ninety percent of the smoke particulate. So, basically, what you see is heat waves coming off of it, and it's a lot cleaner than digging a hole and just burning in a pit, and it's a lot more controlled this way and cleaner. So, we're really looking forward to start using that. The other two items I have, and I gave you a sheet, that looks like this. If you're not aware, at 180 Fulton Street, what has been commonly called the Forest Farms Building, is, belongs to the Street Department, it's extra storage for us. The area is also where we put our salt barn a couple years ago, and it's also where we have all our storage for our different aggregates and different gravels. Depending on how things go with the waste water, or I'm sorry, the stormwater ordinance, and however that utility gets started up, one of the future things we're looking at is potentially moving the Street Department to this location, to make room for the stormwater utility at the wastewater plant. So, in doing all that, we've had problems in the past with people back there and trying to secure that area. I wanted to put a fence up, put a security fence around that property, which I thought, again, like the mayor, was going to be a simple thing, and it's turned into kind of a complicated thing. So, with that said, what we have is, back in, like, the early nineteen hundreds, that whole area out by where the, well, across the road tracks, where you've got the scale barn and all that, that had originally been platted with streets and properties and all that, and so if you look, you see, like, it says Ald Street and some others there. Most of that had been vacated, and J Street, actually, the city council vacated a portion back in the nineties, and for some reason, this one section behind Forest Farms never got vacated. So, we have to do a vacation for that, and basically, what I'm looking for from the city council tonight is approval or a go-ahead to have that ordinance generated, so that we can bring that to you at the next meeting, so that we can get that portion of J Street vacated. The other portion that you see, the little triangular piece, was another surprise. We have a drive on the north side of that building, that we always thought that the city owned that property, and then when I talked to Seth White, he asked me where I thought the property line was, and I told him, "There's a natural fence line along there." Well, that's not where it's at, it was actually almost right up against the building. And so, now, I've already engaged John Little, and we've had discussions with the property owners of the railroad to purchase that small triangle piece of property, so that we can put our fence up. So, that part is already in work, but the part for the city council will be vacating that portion of J Street.
Andy, that, I'm assuming he mentioned going forward with an ordinance to that effect, correct?
Yeah.
So, do we need to vote to go forward, or just wait?
Your, your only vote would be granting vacation, no, you don't need to vote tonight, just, I think he's looking for authorization to proceed, because it's a little unusual to have the city department be the petitioner to vacate something. And I said, I, we talked about it, and I said, "Well, if there are no dissenting votes." But other than that, it would be the same as any vacation. The only difference here is that Dwayne or his department would essentially be the petitioner, but we'd still need to proceed with making the request, notifying adjacent property owners, and then I would prepare the ordinance next month.
And then we would vote on that.
And you vote on that?
Or we're ready to say, hey, go for it. Isn't that right? What do we need to have a vote?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing as well.
Okay.
To add to this a little bit, what he explained, because I thought, my, my question was, it's already, I mean, the city already, it's already kind of like the cities, but he said it's not, it's actually public, it could still be a public street, so we need to take that out of our inventory per se, and bring that in as the property. And I've already talked to the odd fellows, who are the other property owner on the other side, and they are not interested in any of that property at all, so when we vacate, we're going to be asking for the whole piece there.
Okay, so, we're going forward with that, for an ordinance to be drawn up for that vacation, correct? And we're also looking at Circle Drive, which is another set of maps you have right here that was, we call it Circle Drive, it doesn't really, does it have a name?
No, it doesn't. I just called that just to simplify the fact that it is a circle, and for lack of a better term to use. And in this, so, so what we have is, the, the city already maintains the drive around the park. We plow, we plow it, we patch it, we also, the police patrol it. It's used as a street, it's an extension of Thirteenth Street for people to get around over to Park Street. And so, we were looking at ways that we could improve that area around the park, and so what we're looking at is adding that into our street inventory, which would require a change in the street ordinance to add that. Once it's in our inventory, then it qualifies for community crossing grant for paving. And part of what we're looking at too is to expand, one, to improve the parking that we already have there, and make it some dedicated parking areas with parking blocks and parking lines and all that, and clean that up, because what we've had, and what we have now in our current state is where people are just parking wherever, and the parks, some of the parking spaces keep migrating closer and closer to the pavilions, because people want to walk less and less to them. So, re-establish parking lots that are, that are paved, and, you know, proper markings, and also to expand some of that, so we can add some parking, because, one, if you've ever been out there, one of them been baseball games, they park everywhere. And so, what, what we're going to request at this time is that this be added into our street inventory. When we get to where we do the actual project, and this will be like next year, and the other portion's going to be walking and bike path around the park. So, and then, put the, all the parking spaces in and all that at that time. So, I talked to Chief Schatz about trying to figure out if there's any downsides doing this. I've already known he's been positive about it.
Basketball courts.
The basketball courts. That, that, the only, we're going to have to add signage, of course, for one-way and all that. The speed limit won't change, we'll keep it at ten miles an hour, but the potential problem is going to be, people are going to want to turn right to go to the basketball court, because it's a hundred feet away. Now, my plan is that they, that the parking would be angle parking, so that even if they went that way, they would have to, it would be very difficult for them to turn back around to the park. So, anyway, that's the next thing we're working on. I've presented this to the park, the park's department is in support of it, because it takes the responsibility between that off of their shoulders and puts it on the city.
So, do we need, we don't, this isn't an ordinance thing, because it is receiving this from the park as a, to bring into our inventory?
Yeah, you could, you could vote to approve to bring it into your inventory. I think that there needs to be some coordination with Park Board. My preference would be to have the Park Board pass a resolution to essentially release it from their oversight.
They did, didn't they? They voted to release it.
Did they already vote through it?
They voted to release it last Park Board meeting. Right. You were there.
If you want to vote to accept it in the inventory, I can research it and if it requires a resolution, we can prepare it later. I think, once you accept, vote to accept it, it's up to the public force to determine naming it. But when Dwayne comes back later and wants to do one ways or other restrictions, that will come back appropriate.
Got you, okay. So...
The Park Board's already voted, if you want to vote to accept it, then...
I know they voted on it. So I need a motion to accept it, someone, Amy, second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright. Quickly, Fedco, you heading for it?
No, you pretty much dealt with everything I've been doing lately. The only other thing that I'll add to it is, when I first came, there was a lot of controversy over Blackadder Drive and whatnot, getting to where it needs to get finished. It'll be finished later this summer and I have already contacted a professional site selector in Indianapolis and they're going to advertise the site for us for free for about six months. So, and there is some interest out there in a couple of the lots. So I'll just leave it at that for tonight.
RDC, real quick, we voted last, two weeks ago we had a special meeting, voted to purchase the road in front of the hotels, $25,000 off the hotel owner. He's signed the agreement. We are in the process of getting a survey that should happen this week. McDonald's Corp. is okay with just giving us their part of the deal for us to take under our inventory. The extension, the landowner to the east, I have email agreements to, all that, giving us the area we need for the road extension. Walmart locals said that they would be interested in an entryway at the west end of the parking lot. So everything's coming together on that. The other thing is we voted to basically 25-5 put toward the interior wall to shore up huts as we are in the process of trying to get her back in to open business for public. I had a call in to a structural engineer today, they didn't get back with me, we're trying to finalize that, Andy. Did you get anything further from Gary on that? I think your email said to kind of go through CE Solutions, I remember now.
Yeah.
So I've got that call out there, but I haven't heard. We're trying to get numbers on the outside of it, see how far we're going to go with this whole thing. So more information later, that's kind of where we're at on that right now, so. Park Board?
They met on May 13th and had a very lengthy discussion. About parks.
They did vote to approve the five-year plan engineering firm, which was USI, to proceed with that. So a lot of the major decisions are going to be put into that five-year plan, so. Anything else on that?
I don't think anybody wants to hear it.
Does anybody, from any of the board, have anything you want to add? Waterboard, he sent a nice letter out there, everybody, warm up and read it.
Animal Shelter is a rock star, has notes. Animal Shelter does a good work. Janet Shally. What was the...
Rain tree border in, from him?
Rain makes trees grow.
Okay. Alright, before we, before you guys leave, we got some things we need to sign, so. Need a motion to adjourn, if you don't have any other... Amy, move. John, Garrett, second it. All in favor?